Good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for March 20th, 2018. If we could please call the roll, please?
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whitey.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
And Mayor Mars.
Here. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you all. Tonight, we will start off our meeting with a special presentation of the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission, and Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honored guests. The Carnegie Hero Fund Commission was established by Andrew Carnegie in 1904, following the Harwick Mine Disaster to recognize outstanding acts of selfless heroism. The Commission awards the Carnegie Medal to those who risked their lives to an extraordinary degree while saving or attempting to save the lives of others. The Commission also makes monetary grants to the heroes or next of kin, having awarded more than $39 million over the life of the fund. Tonight, we have the honor of presenting the Carnegie Heroism Medal to the Bondurinco family in recognition of one of Shakopee's own and on behalf of a thankful community.
Thank you, and with that, we will watch a short video.
On January 25th, 1904, an explosion 200 feet underground rocked the Harwick Coal Mine 15 miles north of Pittsburgh. 180 miners were working there on that bitterly cold day. Immediate calls for aid went out, and mine engineer Salwyn Taylor quickly responded. He and others entered the mine and brought 16-year-old Adolf Gunnia to the surface. He was the only one of the miners to leave the mine alive. Salwyn Taylor tragically did not survive the rescue mission. He died soon after from the effects of the toxic gases. In another rescue attempt the next day, coal miner Daniel Lyle entered the mine despite the known dangers, but he too perished. 181 men died in the Harwick Mine Disaster. News of this awful tragedy traveled around the world. In a 64-room mansion in New York's Upper East Side, it caught the attention of Andrew Carnegie, the world's richest man. The deaths of the miners and the rescuers touched him so deeply that he would create an organization that would be, in his own words, "without parallel in the history of human benevolence."
When he set up the Commission, Carnegie focused on something that was of enduring value to human beings, and it's just as valuable today.
So we received a call from one of the folks that worked with the FAA, and he said, "I think we're missing an aircraft."
As I approached the river, the overwhelming thing was that this was as desperate as a scene could be. I was thinking that I have to try something, and so I just kept running until I got to the edge of the river, and then I just hopped in. I could live with myself if I attempted to do something and failed on that occasion, even if I didn't survive it. I could figuratively live with that. If I did nothing, I don't know if I could live with that.
Heroes are people who put themselves in danger of life or serious injury to save the life of someone else. We ask, did they leave a place of safety? Did they put themselves in danger of death or serious injury? And as subsidiary question, did they understand that? And finally, did they do it to rescue another human being?
As I was making my way out toward them, I was yelling to them that I was coming out, because the object of this whole thing was to give them some measure of hope. If I could just buy them a little time, maybe somebody could do something. Maybe not me, but somebody could.
We shot an approach into the main wreckage area and immediately saw someone struggling in the water. We weren't really sure how long they'd been in the water, but we knew that the time was critical.
So I told Don, "Well, let's go in right on top and pick this lady up, because it seems she's having some problems." So he did. He did a magnificent job of putting me right on top of her, and my end of the skid I was standing on out there went under the water, and that just allowed me, when I leaned over and got a hold of her, I could just float her right up on the skid with me.
Right away, he told me that we were taking on water and that the back of the aircraft was going into the water, so I had to compensate for his weight plus her weight to make sure the tail rotor didn't touch the water surface. And as soon as he said, "Go," then I went. As we approached the shoreline, the rotor system was at forehead level, so we'd had to raise an altitude to not kill people on the shoreline.
They had dropped two lines from the helicopter. One girl grabbed one of them, then there was a man, and a girl grabbed the other one. The guy's hanging on to the buoy, and the girl's hanging on to him, and the helicopter starts coming towards the bank. First girl falls off, then a second girl falls off, and she's on a slab of ice. She grabs the buoy again with both hands, starts towards the bank. The minute she comes off the ice slab, one of the arms comes out of the buoy. At that second, I'm taking my boots and my coat off, and I've decided I'm going in after. So I make my way to the embankment, dive in the water, swim out to her, position myself behind her the best way I could. So I just grabbed her, give her a little push, get her head above water, and then fire them, waded in, grabbed her, and then I swam off to the side, and that was, mission accomplished.
10 minutes, that's all it was.
I think a hero is somebody who does something because something inside wakes up and says, "You've got to do that." And what they do is positive, and it does something, it changes somebody's life. I think that's a hero.
I think the important thing in acknowledging heroic acts, heroic people, is that people come to see that the ones that they're looking up to as heroes are really no different from themselves, and that everyone has the capability of doing extraordinary things under extraordinary circumstances, and more importantly, that even under circumstances that are not extraordinary, that we all have the capability of helping each other, and we're at our best when we do that.
Our heroes are as different among themselves as all human beings are, but if there's a theme that runs through their reactions, it's a little bit of surprise and a little bit of humility, a little bit of disbelief that what they did was so very special. But one of the nice things about the Commission and the award is that we're there to say, "Oh, yes, it was special."
The Carnegie Hero Fund Commission awarded its first medal to 17-year-old Louis Baumann, who in 1904 saved a childhood friend from drowning. In 1956, Dorothy Koch was honored for saving two policemen during a shootout in a Cleveland nightclub. Dorothy was struck by a bullet and paralyzed for life. World-ranked boxer Rudell Stitch is one of only four people to have received the Carnegie Medal twice, in 1958 and again in 1960. He was involved in rescues near a dam on the Ohio River in Louisville, Kentucky. He and the victim survived the first, but both died in the second. Over its history, the Carnegie Hero Fund has awarded the Carnegie Medal to thousands of individuals who have risked their lives on behalf of others, and has distributed millions of dollars in grants, tuition, and other financial assistance to them and their families. It is an enormous legacy, representing thousands of lives saved, thousands of children who would be born and raised, work that would be done. The power and dignity of these actions resonates to this day when new heroes walk among us. On a busy street corner, Andy Johnson disarmed and subdued a man attacking a young woman with an eight-inch meat cleaver.
People always ask me why I did it, and I think it's because they're trying to figure out whether or not they would do it themselves.
When a sniper opened fire on her college campus, Holly Garlets ran out into the line of fire to pull a wounded classmate to safety.
Things could have turned out so differently that day, but it's made me grateful for everything that I have.
While attending a ballgame, Ramonda Freeman rescued a wounded boy from the middle of a gunfight between rival gangs.
He was just a kid, and I'm a mom, and I wasn't gonna just leave.
Helicopter pilots Kevin Caffrey and Jeffrey Miller executed a perilous and technically challenging rescue of a woman clinging to a small tree in the Niagara River.
When we get a call up in Niagara Falls, certainly your heart skips a beat. All it takes is one mistake.
What do the heroes have in common? It can be said about all of them that they have an ethic of caring. In one single inspired moment, one selfless act, they put another's life ahead of their own.
When you look back over our history, you see the medals and the people who won them, and you think about the people whose lives were saved, the lives that were lost. It seems massive, but the thing we always remember is it was done one rescue at a time, one decision at a time, by one individual, and that's what we're honoring.
I do not expect to stimulate or create heroism by this fund, knowing well that heroic action is impulsive. The Hero Fund is for watching, applauding, and supporting the heroic action, wherever displayed and by whomever displayed. At least this is my hope.
I'm gonna now read the press release in regard to the Carnegie Hero Fund. Dmitri Bondurinco died attempting to save Alexis Kaneshev from drowning in Panama City, Florida on August 10th, 2016. Kaneshev, 60, became trapped in a strong current in the Gulf of Mexico that took him away from shore and kept him from returning in the choppy water at a point about 160 feet from shore. Bondurinco, 39, a business operator in Shakopee, Minnesota, was alerted that Kaneshev needed help. Despite the strong current, Bondurinco, who was on a family vacation and was Kaneshev's relative, ran to the water, entered the surf, and waded and swam towards him. Another man reached Kaneshev, but a wave separated them, and the man returned to shore. Bondurinco reached a point about three feet from Kaneshev and told him to swim. Bondurinco submerged and never resurfaced. Kaneshev swam out to the rip current and towards the shore. Another man entered with a rescue tube and swam to Kaneshev when he reached a point about 50 feet from shore and aided him back to the beach. Kaneshev was treated at the scene for water inhalation and near exhaustion, from which he recovered in three days. Bondurinco's family, where his body was recovered in the water the next day. He had drowned. On behalf of the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission, I would like to present the Carnegie Medal to Artem Bondurinco, son of Dmitri Bondurinco. We are all very proud of Dmitri and the very strong family that you have. Very proud of in our community and the surrounding communities in which you live in. As that video said, heroes do the quiet work, and let's all remember that Dmitri was one of them. Thank you all.
As we remember and celebrate Dimitri tonight, we need to remember that he was a husband, a father, a friend, and most of all, a hero. Thank you very much for being here tonight. If the family would like to come up on the edge of the Diaz and take a picture with the medal, can do that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll make a motion for a five-minute break.
All right.
Second?
Second. I have a motion for a break in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll just stand in recess for a few minutes. We'll reconvene this City of Shakopee City Council meeting, act order for March 20th, 2018. We're on item number four, approval of the agenda. Any changes, corrections, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, the only correction is on item 8A. The resolution was wrongly labeled as R-2018-TAC-027. That resolution is actually R-2018-TAC-32.
Do we have a copy of that?
It's the same resolution, it's just a different number.
Number's different.
Will you give me the number again?
The number is 032. R-2018-TAC-032, as opposed to R-2018-TAC-027. Everything else is the same, it's just the...
Just the number.
Yes, sir.
All right. If there's no other changes, Counselor Moco?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, as amended.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Agenda's been approved. The consent agenda, are there any additions, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
5C1 and 5D1, questions.
5C1?
C1 and D1.
And 5D1.
Consent agenda is amended.
All right. I have a motion, a second, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Agenda's been approved. The consent agenda, are there any additions, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
5C1 and 5D1, questions.
5C1?
C1 and D1.
And 5D1.
Consent agenda is amended.
All right. I have a motion, a second. Like a chance to pick something? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. 5A1, 5A4. 5A1? Yep. 5A4? 5A4. 5D2. So, as it stands right now, 5A1, 5A4, 5C1, 5D1, and 5D2. Is that correct?
That's what I have.
Yes, sir.
So...
Counselor Lehman?
I guess I'll amend my motion to include what's currently been amended on the consent agenda.
You were the motion maker, and a second?
Second, yep.
That's okay with the second?
Mm-hmm.
And before we vote then, we will read the modified consent agenda into the public record, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for March 20th of 2018. 5A2 approves the minutes of the March 6, 2018, meeting. 5A3 approves a temporary liquor license for Minnesota Farm Winery Association for a wine tasting event on April 28th, 2018, at 1100 Canterbury Road. 5B1 approves and authorizes appropriate staff to execute a contract for software licensing with active network for up to three years at an annual cost not to exceed $14,700.
The modified consent agenda's been read into the record. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Now, I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move forward then. Item number seven, business removed from consent, and 5A1 is up, and...
Did we vote on the consent?
Huh? Did we vote on the consent? Yeah. We voted on consent.
We voted on the consent motion, yes.
So, we're at seven. 5A1, which is a consolidation of two part-time positions to one full-time for communication. Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I had a question on option two, where we're gonna possibly end up splitting an employee with another city. I don't know how well that's gonna work out. I mean, per Bill's comment, you can't serve two masters, so who are they gonna work for?
Are we tonight just really authorizing option one, though?
We are authorizing option one, and I've got no problems with option two because you answer to whoever's house you're in at the time. So, if you're in the Shakopee house, you would answer to the Shakopee side of the house. If you're in another community, you would answer to that community.
Counselor Lehman?
Just a follow-up on this. When I read this, the budget impact portion, the budget impact portion says a full-time communications specialist, so that kinda leads me to imply that option one is what really our goal is, is to combine the two into one and have that one position here.
Yes, sir. We don't know if this person exists.
Okay.
So, we're trying, we're trying to see if they do. If not, then we'll fall back on option two and look at the sharing, sharing the position, then.
Follow-up? If we, if we did end up, Mayor, falling back to option two, would we still pursue option one, long-term?
No, sir. I think we're basically giving it a shot, and if it doesn't work, we know we have a year, year and a half, where option two may become viable, but if not, you know, we need to find a solution. Option one is that first piece. If it doesn't work, we'll go directly to option two, then.
Okay.
Counselor Luce?
I guess I'm questioning, I haven't heard anything spoken about, but are we going to have our own channel again, like we used to, or what is the plan for this position?
Well, we currently have a channel. We do not have a public access channel. We haven't had a public access channel for, I don't know, maybe...
Three years, four years?
No, it's been before I was here.
Five years.
There's no intent to go back to a public access channel.
Okay. That was part of my question, and the second part of the question is, when this is filled one way or the other, will this come back to council, or is this a done deal upon this vote?
If, if the, what's in front of council right now is the authorization for option one. If that, if that moves forward, then we are authorized to make that hire, based upon today. We wouldn't need authorization for option two because that's a part-time position. But we wanted to make sure that we inform council as to what the plan was and what, because we're really kind of just attempting option one. Like I said, we're not really sure that that skill set exists. We're hoping it does.
Counselor Lehman?
I think we actually have three peg channels. The one that the council meetings and government stuff are on, one that the school district puts their meetings out on, and one that's kind of there but not utilized, and that was that public access.
Yes, sir. We don't have a public access channel. We have, we have two other channels, one of which is this channel, which we're on right now, and the other one is the school district. And in talking with the school district, it appears they want theirs to be a little more active into the future, so...
And we do have no intent of going back to the, what we used to have, where the citizens could use it.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. So, questions, Counselor Luce, all squared away here?
Yep.
Make sure the things... I have a few questions. They're resolved.
You wanna offer a motion, then, for this?
Jay's better.
I'll offer, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of a full-time communications specialist at grade 150 of the 2018 non-union pay plan.
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Lehman, is that correct?
Second.
Second. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead then to item 5A4. Counselor Luce?
Two questions. Do we expect this to be a full six months, or are we hoping, just hoping for the best at less than six months? And the second part of the question is, is there an alternative to this, or is this our best alternative?
Jennifer?
This is the best alternative, and we have no idea what the timeframe is at this point. Our best guess is six months, could be less.
Could it be more?
Hopefully not.
Counselor Whiting?
As, as I recall, we've made this a practice in the past, where we've made an extension, and so we have that past practice.
Yes.
So, hopefully it works out, and we get this person back to active duty here, rather than light duty, but we do have that as a past practice.
Counselor Lehman?
If it's, I have no problem with what's recommended. If it's gonna go past six months, I think that we have a, have to take a look at...
I agree.
We're going through the work comm process, so this request is as it is right now.
Yep.
Just had questions, I just wanted to answer. No, that's fine. You wanna make a motion, or Counselor Lehman?
Approval to extend a police officer's light duty assignment for up to an additional six months.
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Whiting. Further discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next up, 5C1. Counselor Lehman?
Actually, I've got a host of questions on this one. We originally approved a preliminary plat, and I don't know that I have that in my packet.
Counselor Lehman, you're gonna have to speak into the mic, we cannot...
I'm sorry.
Please.
You know, and with this Diaz and the short mic here, I don't know that I can move this up and look at that. I'm like, something new tonight, awesome. Couple of questions. I don't know that I have a copy of the original preliminary plat that was approved on this site, in this packet.
Uh, the consent agenda, are there any additions, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Counselor Lehman?
Five C one and five D one, questions.
Five C one?
C one and D one.
And five D one.
Consent agenda is amended.
All right, um, I have a motion in a second.
Like a chance to pick something up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Five A one, five A four.
Five A one.
Yep. Five A four.
Five A four.
Five D two.
So, as it stands right now, five A one, five A four, five C one, five D one, and five D two.
Is that correct?
That's what I have.
Yes, sir.
So...
Uh, Counselor Lehman?
Uh, I guess I'll amend my motion to include what's currently been amended on the consent agenda.
You were the motion maker. And a second?
Second, yep.
It's okay with a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, uh, before we vote then, we will read the modified consent agenda into the public record, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, these are the consent agenda items for March twentieth of twenty eighteen. Five A two approves the minutes of the March sixth, twenty eighteen, meeting. Five A three approves a temporary liquor license for Minnesota Farm Winery Association for a wine tasting event on April twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, at eleven hundred Canterbury Road. Five B one approves and authorizes appropriate staff to execute a contract for software licensing with active network for up to three years at an annual cost not to exceed fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
Uh, consent, modified consent agenda has been read into the record. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, thank you. Now, I'd like to call on any, uh, resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. On an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move forward then. Item number seven, uh, business removed from consent, and five A one is up and...
Did we vote on the consent?
Huh?
Did we vote on the consent?
Yeah. We voted on consent.
We voted on the consent motion, yes.
Um, so we're at seven. Five A one, uh, which is a consolidation of two part-time positions to one full-time for communication. Uh, Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I had a question on, uh, option two, where we're gonna possibly end up splitting an employee with another city. Um, I don't know how well that's gonna work out, I mean, per Bill's comment, you can't serve two masters, so who are they gonna work for?
Are we tonight just really authorizing option one, though?
We are authorizing option one, and I've got no problems with option two because you answer to whoever's house you're in at the time. So, if you're in the Shakopee house, you would answer to the Shakopee side of the house. If you're in another community, you would answer to that community.
Counselor Lehman?
Just a follow-up on this, when I read this, the budget impact portion, the budget impact portion, um, says a full-time communication specialist. So, that kinda leads me to imply that option one is, is what really our goal is, is to combine the two into one and have that one position here.
Yes, sir, we don't know if this person exists.
Okay.
So, we're, we're trying, we're trying to, to see if they do. Uh, if not, then we'll fall back on option two and look at the sharing, uh, uh, sharing the position then.
Follow-up? If we, if we did end up, uh, Mayor, falling back to option two, would we still pursue option one, long-term?
Uh, no, sir, uh, I think we're, we're, we're basically giving it a shot, and if it doesn't work, uh, we know we have a year, year and a half that where option two may become viable, uh, but if not, uh, it, you know, uh, we need to find a solution. Option one is that first piece, if it doesn't work, we'll, we'll go directly to option two then.
Okay.
Counselor Luce?
Um, I guess I'm questioning, or I haven't heard anything spoken about, but are we going to have our own channel again like we used to? Or what is the plan for this position?
Well, we currently have a channel, we do not have a public access channel. We haven't had a public access channel for, I don't know, maybe...
Three years, four years?
No, it's been before I was here.
Five years.
Uh, there's no intent to go back to a public access channel.
Okay, that was part of my question, and the second part of the question is, when this is filled one way or the other, will this come back to council, or is this a done deal upon this vote?
If, if the, what's in front of council right now is the authorization for option one. If that, if that moves forward, then we are authorized to make that hire, based upon today. Uh, we wouldn't need authorization for option two because that's a part-time position. But we wanted to make sure that we inform council as to what the plan was and what, because we're really kind of just attempting option one, like I said, we're not really sure that, uh, that skillset exists, we're hoping it does.
Counselor Lehman?
I think we actually have three peg channels. The one that the council meetings and government stuff are on, one that the school district puts their meetings out on, and one that's kinda there but not utilized, and that was that public access.
Yes, sir, we, we don't have a public access channel, we have, we have two other channels, one of which is this channel, which we're on right now, and the other one is the school district, and in talking with the school district, it appears they want theirs to be a little more active into the future, so...
And we do have no intent of going back to the, what we used to have where the citizens could use it.
Nope.
That's great, thank you.
So, um, questions, Counselor Luce, all squared away here?
Yep, yep.
Offer a motion?
Make sure the thing's... Got a few questions, and they're, they're resolved.
You wanna offer a motion then for this?
Jay's better.
Okay.
I'll offer, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of a full-time communication specialist at grade one fifty of the twenty eighteen non-union play, pay plan.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lehman, is that correct?
Second.
Second, further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, thank you. Moving ahead then to item, uh, five A four, Counselor Luce?
Two questions, um, do we expect this to be a full six months, or are we hoping, just hoping for the best at less than six months? And the second part of the question is, is there an alternative to this, or is this our best alternative?
Jennifer?
This is the best alternative, and we have no idea what the timeframe is at this point. Our best guess is six months, could be less.
Could it be more?
Hopefully not.
Counselor, uh, Whitey?
Uh, as, as I recall, we've made this, uh, a practice in the past where we've made an extension, and so we have that past practice.
Yes.
So, uh, hopefully it works out, and we get this person back to active, uh, duty here, rather than light duty, but, uh, we do have that as a past practice.
Counselor Lehman?
If it's, I have no problem with what's recommended. If it's gonna go past six months, I think that we have a, have to take a look at...
Well, I agree.
We're going through the work comm process, so this request is as it is right now.
Yep.
Just had questions, I just wanted to answer.
No, that's fine. You wanna make a motion, or Counselor Lehman?
Approval to extend a police officer's light duty assignment for up to an additional six months.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whitey. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, next up, five C one, Counselor Lehman?
Actually, I've got a host of questions on this one. We originally approved a preliminary plat, and I, I don't know that I have that in my packet.
Counselor Lehman, you're gonna have to speak into the mic, we cannot...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
You know, and with this Diaz and the short mic here, I don't know that I can move this up and look at that. I'm like, something new tonight, awesome. Um, couple of questions, I don't know that I have a copy of the original, um, preliminary plat that was approved on this site, in this packet.
This is your preliminary and final plat?
Right, but there has been a prior one approved.
Correct, there is a project that was constructed, um, over in this section. Um, this is plating this last section that was left over.
Okay, the way I...
Acquired by Skinnell.
The, the way I read this, it said that there was a prior preliminary plat approved for this site.
So, this is the, um, Valley View Business Park Third Edition, if you remember, Valley, Valley View Business Park has had numerous additions, it's a very large area. Up on your screen right now is, um, block one, which is what we're discussing tonight. Was not owned by Skinnell, it was owned by another party, which they acquired.
Okay, and maybe I'm confused because it says, "The original preliminary plat of the forty-acre development was approved by the city council July sixteen, twenty thirteen." The first two additions created lots for CommScope and Elander Mechanical, this proposed plat is for the remaining eighteen point one. So, the original forty included the eighteen point one.
Counselor Lehman, if you look at this picture, so, um, Elander's down here, and this is the other large building that exists right here.
CommScope, yep.
And this is the piece that's left over. So, we're doing a final plat of this so they can build, um, the structures down here.
Oh, would the, would these be outlots, and now we're gonna become plotted?
Buildable lots, yes, sir.
Okay, and...
That's where...
Yep, just trying to make sure I understand where we're going here, and then the colored picture, second one in the packet, the red line going north and south from Fourth Avenue behind CommScope, okay, that road was put in as part of the original to feed both sides, right?
Counselor Lehman, that's correct, that's a shared driveway.
Yep, and the, the question and concern I have right now is looking further on into what's... Let me back up, do we have applications for these two uses on this property right now?
Applications as in building permits?
Somebody wants to build what we're seeing on the screen right now?
We currently do not have building permits, so just showing what the layout could be with these two buildings. We, we don't see building permits at plat, all you're really looking at is the property.
Okay.
Not approving buildings. But this is showing you that they can have access from here down into the property, and there's an additional shared driveway here that goes out next to the Elander building.
Yep.
That was part of the original plat.
Well, you know, the concern I guess I have is looking at what could go there, that you're showing on the screen right now, it... How many, how many parking stalls do we see on this picture, additional?
They meet, based on what you're seeing in this concept drawing...
Yep.
They meet the code.
Okay. Just eyeballing it, that's a lot of parking, and, and they're all gonna be using that north-south, um, and I'm wondering if that north-south is wide enough? So, this might be an actual development question?
So, so again, when the project comes through development, we'll make sure it has adequate parking, but they do have an access that's here that goes out...
Yep.
Next to Elander, they also have this access here, and they also have access here onto, um, Berenshire.
Well, this show, this shows the Berenshire access going through a parking lot.
Correct, there's, there's not currently a, um, public right-of-way, but they have an agreement with Canterbury to access that. It's currently private property.
And, and I'm saying, if you're gonna run all this traffic through a parking lot, does, is that the best way to move traffic? And I'm thinking that the north-south to Fourth Street, is it wide enough? We might have the opportunity in this development of these two lots to make that wider for long-term traffic.
Are we seeing it to real true scale here, though?
I don't believe you are, it's wide enough based on our code, and also they have this secondary access, so they actually have two current accesses to public right-of-way.
Is, is connection to Berenshire required to develop these lots?
No, but it was recommended, um, by planning and engineering staff, 'cause if, let's say, uh, something breaks down here, then you would force everyone out here, this is a relief. Um, for these parking areas here, gets those people out and off the property.
Yeah, takes them off the other two, it, so it's not required, it's, but it's recommended?
Yep.
Okay.
So, what...
The applicants also here...
Previous, previous plat parking, you have more?
Well, I, if it's requ, if, if that parking lot just north of Berenshire requires access to Berenshire, there should be a, a petition to the city to construct that section of it, um, and a, and an assessment going back to that development.
It's not a s, a city, 'cause it's now, it's owned by Canterbury, they, they would get access from Canterbury, correct?
Mayor, that's correct, a long-term plan, um, and we're do, currently doing a, um, coming forward a traffic analysis to see whether this road can be extended in the future.
I, I just wasn't clear on a couple of points, and if, if that, uh, if what I'm seeing here is being proposed, then, you know, I wanted to make some concerns about the traffic.
Oh, it looks narrow, but I think those would be designed in a way for a standard driveline, but I think, I agree that I think that we're seeing it in a weird scale here that makes it look tight, um, from that, but they have, uh, they have some accesses now that may be okay, but...
It's always hard to come back after the fact to make it wider, that's just, so I wanna...
But we don't have a, we don't have a, a, a user...
Right, we don't have a project.
Right.
We will make sure that it, I mean, the fire department in particular will make sure that it's wide enough, um...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
The fire department will make sure it's wide enough, there was discussions with the adjoining property owner getting an additional access over here. That's really not wide enough, and so there was a requirement that if they were gonna use it, they had to make it wider so it would meet our standards. They couldn't reach agreement with that property owner, so they have abandoned using that as an access point.
Counselor Luce?
The traffic study that you mentioned, is that part of the Canterbury Commons Traffic Study?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
More, less?
I, I think I have answers to my questions.
All right. Would you like to entertain a motion?
We're all gonna entertain one shortly.
Other questions on this? Counselor Lehman?
Offer resolution R two eighteen dash zero three one, approving a preliminary and final plat of Valley View Business Park Third Edition.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor, uh, Whitey. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you. Up next, five D one, and I believe, uh, Counselor Lehman?
Five D one.
Five D...
Mister pre-approved professional engineering consultants. Again, a couple of questions, one is, it's not very clear, but I'm, is this strictly for the city to use, or for a developer to use?
Steve?
Uh, Mayor and council members, this would be for city staff, for the city to use, um, professional consulting services such as engineering, geotechnical, architectural. Um, this is, uh, generally carrying on what the city's done, um, looking at the last agreement, uh, consultant pool, um, dating back, um, I think it was to at least five years ago, and was extended the last couple of years. Um, the prior consultant pool consisted of only three consultants, I think they were, um, SEH Consulting, WSB Consulting, and...
RSF?
SRF Consulting. So, what we did here was, we looked at, uh, the city's needs for consulting services over the next years, and, um, have a pretty robust pool, um, ranging in experience and, um, as well as rates. When we have easier projects, simpler, we, we look at hiring a, a less costly, um, consultant, and, um, we do have those robust cons, consultants that can handle the, the bigger jobs.
Counselor Whitey?
Do, uh, companies that could come in and do this workforce, could they come in and petition to be on the list, and we can modify this at a future time?
Uh, Mayor and council members, this, the, as presented in the resolution, there's, there's a, I think there's twenty-one consultants is what I have listed here. Um, what we have is, we, so we, we solicited, um, consultants to give us a statement of qualifications. Uh, we, and actually, every single consultant that we got a, that we got a proposal from is on this list. Um, they didn't get all the work, uh, in, in all the categories that they wanted, um, but, um, we did solicit from a few consultants that didn't submit a proposal, but, um, but this is a list of, I, I think it's, yeah, twenty-one firms for a, a lot of different work, and, does that answer your question?
No.
No.
Let's say, uh, uh, just for an example, SRF, maybe F wants to go off on his own and start his own consulting firm, so now SR is gonna be on the list, and this F consulting firm comes in, can they say, here's our qual, you know, we're starting this new group, here's our qualifications, we'd like to be on your list? Can we have an opportunity to look at what they're proposing and put them on the list?
Well, this is, this is intended to be the list for the next three years, we plan on staying consistent with this list. We do plan on annually looking at their rates, we have rate schedules for every one of these consultants, and if, uh, we get gouged from one year to the next, we might take a break from them, even though they're on this list, we go project by project and hiring them. Um, if it's over the purchase allotment above mine, or the city administrator's, um, approval authority, the, these agreements that we will have with each and every one of these consultants, um, on a project-by-project basis, if they're over the, I think it's a twenty-five thousand dollar mark, they will come back to you for approval, so we will, on a, if we have a project, we'll develop a scope with, um, a selected consulting firm, bring it to you for approval, and that's pretty much what we do right now, so it's, it's staying consistent with that.
Yeah, and, and to specifically answer your question, uh, Counselor Whitey, uh, we will not, but we will invite them to be a part of the next process in the next three years, to send their qualifications in and their rate schedule, and we'll take a look.
My only concern is that we're, we're, you know, putting ourselves in a box, and maybe there's opportunities out there that come up, and, uh...
Well, I, I, and I can tell you that we've been a very small box for the last...
Oh, yeah.
Eight years, where we had three firms. And that was our, that was our pool.
This is an expanded list.
So, we, we have, we have really opened up that box quite a bit, to give us the latitude to, as, uh, as Steve was saying, to, on some projects that, uh, might not need a, 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 an organization that has this kind of a price schedule based upon what they do, we can then come back and, and try to find a more economical, um, um, way of doing it.
Okay, Counselor Luce?
To use Counselor Whitey's analogy, if, uh, Group F wants to come to the city, wouldn't we wanna see a track record? So, three years is giving them time to get a track record, so...
Um, Counselor Lehman?
I don't like to limit ourselves, to be honest, I, I, the, the easy fix here is to say this is, you know, the, the first list of staff's u, usage, but doesn't mean they can't use somebody else that they deem is totally qualified or even specialized in an area of expertise that they may need on any given project. There's some names on here that I've never heard of, and I've been doing this for a while, that I would like to check out a little bit further, and I do think there may be a conflict with MKSK, um, putting our comp plan together, they may in fact be putting projects in that they might capitalize on, and I think that's, that's a conflict. I'm not real comfortable with this at this point.
Okay.
In, in the past, we've, we've done this same thing.
Yep.
The difference is, is that in the past, we had a very small box.
Yep.
And so, we literally had three people, three organizations that we as a staff could choose from.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that is very limiting in a lot of respects. It's limiting in regards to expertise, but it's also limiting in regards to price structure. What, what Steve has done is to take a, a broad net and say, okay, we understand that these three are qualified. What else out there is qualified that we can look at, uh, so we then have some opportunity to save money on occasion, uh, and then also to spread, spread our business around a little bit as well, because, uh, uh, sometimes, and I'm not making any comments on, on organizations that do government work, but sometimes there are organizations that are at that government trough quite a bit, and we, we want to broaden that horizon, if you will.
Yeah, I've seen these lists in the past, and, uh, this is by far and away the, the broadest ever seen, both in categories and in depth, and, uh, I think it helps us competitively and, uh, um, from that aspect.
Mayor, I, Mayor, I can tell you, the years that we had three listed, we used many more than three, we, we used others that weren't listed.
Weren't on the list.
So, we have done that substantially, so it's not, I'm just, I have an issue with a possible conflict with this one, and I'd like to check some of these that I've never heard, that I've never heard about.
Uh...
Ever heard, never heard of them.
Okay, Counselor Luce?
I do like expanding the list that, you know, we have, I, I, I agree with Mr. Reynolds that, you know, three or four is ridiculously small, and it seems like they're forever at the trough, and, uh, I think some of them get complacent, thinking that, you know, we're, they're gonna get the bid no matter what, so the prices aren't competitive, so I like this part, but I do agree with Counselor Lehman that, uh, there might be a conflict of interest with the one, one party there being that they're so tied with the city right now with the comp plan.
Counselor, uh, Whitey?
Is there anything time-sensitive about this list, Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Lilyhog?
Uh, Mayor and council members, um, time s, time-sensitive, um...
Mike, I, what I would like is, maybe if we could table it, could bring it back in two weeks?
So, I, I do have a lot of work geared up, and I did plan on bringing a couple of these consultants back to you at the next meeting so we can get going on some of the work, but, but I would say, um, in, in response to a couple of other questions would be, this is the list, this, that, that we're presenting, um, the, the staff in here, we have, we have experience with all, all of these consultants, they're good consultants, we trust them, they wouldn't be on this list if they weren't.
Right.
Um, so, so I do offer you that, and I do also offer two other things, one would be, so what's the purpose of this list? Um, one of the primary purposes of this list is to, you know, have that working relation with, with good consultants, have experience with them. It's, it's good to have that in this business, it's, it's very important. Um, another important element would be, is if we didn't have this list, for every, and I have a lot of projects lined up in our capital improvement program, but for every single project I have, I would have to go out and solicit a minimum of two to three quotes from consultants every time I needed to hire someone, that's very onerous on the consultants, and it, it takes a lot of work just to go through that process. So, this, this consultant pool, um, streamlines that, it does it upfront, we get all of that done in, um, you know, on an annual basis or a three-year period. Um, so it does help in that regard, and then, um, the, the final, um, uh, element I would offer would be, this, this is the list, it doesn't mean that we, we can amend this list, you can amend this list at any time, um, one way or the other, we can take consultants out, we can add some to it, um, if, if we have a, a certain amount of work that we don't even wanna go on this list, we could go out for an RFP for three other consultants that aren't on this list. This, this list just helps us balance and get this workload done that we have in front of you, but we have all the flexibility at all times.
Um, just, uh, Counselor Mokel?
Well, the thing that I would like to add is that, you know, I, I think that this is a good idea to have a list and be, um, consistent in what, how we use it. Um, I, I've heard of every company on this list, I mean, if you go to enough events, you will see them, um, but I think to say, you know, point out one person on this list is a conflict, every, there, there's one in every category that's worked at the city, if you wanna call it conflict, just because they did a project, I think that's, um, short-sighted, so I, I have no problem with this list in going forward and getting these things done.
Counselor Luce?
I just wanna understand the, the list situation, when we have a project, or you have a project coming up, and you send it out for RFP, I'm guessing that this is already set up in your email address, that you just hit one button, it goes to all of them, and they can respond?
So, with, with this list, um, when we have a project, we will go with the, a best fit, like there's a, like the Twelfth Avenue Trail Project. Um, we had three consultants in the pool, W, as an example, WSB, SEH, and SRF. It was a good fit, we had, we were working with WSB on a lot of other things, um, and, and this was a good, good fit for SEH at the time, so we brought them in. We developed a scope with them, and they put some dollar amounts based on their rates, their standard rates that the city approves on an annual basis, and we looked at that scope, made sure it was in line, um, and then we brought that professional service extension agreement to you to approve that. So, that, that's, that's how... So that's how this would happen here. We don't go out for an RFP every time. We sit down with one of the consultants in that category, that's the best fit at that time, and then we mix it up, and then we bring it back to you for approval on those, on these larger projects. So we're avoiding that RFP process every single time.
Council Lehman?
Mayor, I don't want to stop any of his projects.
Is there a way that we can get Steve to get you some staff to get you additional information?
Well, I
Move this forward?
I would support Mr. Wyding in bringing us back in two weeks. Give me a chance to sit down with our engineer and our staff. I just, what I have, Monday, I had one day from receiving this, one working business day, to sit down with anybody and talk about this, which was Monday, and it just wasn't enough time. But in the meantime, not stop any of your projects that you want to move. I don't see the negative repercussions of this on it from either standpoint.
Council Lewis?
The tabling of this, would that really curtail any of your work? I mean, you can still talk to the consultants, I mean, you can still have them in, I mean, and get their input on it. I mean, two weeks, I mean, if it's a major
We'll make do, we'll make do.
I'm not saying, I don't want you to make do, I want the best for the city, but I want to, you know, understand
We have time.
Council Lehman's concerns. As long as you can keep moving forward, I would be okay with tabling it. If you're not going to be able to move forward, I guess I would like to modify that concern at this point.
Council Lehman?
Make a motion to table this to our next meeting, give us an opportunity to go through this and sit down with staff. And to further say that, he can go ahead and, engineering staff can go ahead with any projects they got into works and not be held up in any way by this tabling action.
Second. I have a motion and a second, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion table passes, thank you. Moving ahead then to 5D2, Council Lewis?
Well, to start off, I love the fact that we got some grants on this project. My only concern is with the realignment that the county's going to do with 83, that we leave some room between 83 and the end of our trail so that we're not putting a trail in and then tearing it up in a year, you know, parts of it up in a year. I just, I hate seeing projects put in and torn up within a year or so, it just makes no sense.
Yeah, Mayor and council members, we do plan on budding up to the trail on 83, but we do want to minimize any traffic signal work we do, the automated pedestrian push buttons and the concrete pedestrian curb ramps. We want to avoid all that extra work, but we do want to come up to the existing trail. It would be minimal impact, we'd have to remove with the County Highway 83 project that's planned for 2021, we'd have to remove, you know, 20, 30 feet of trail, so that's real minimum cost. And that connection would be key, though, to make. And it, I don't, you know, there's a lot of times I, we avoid wasted money by building something, ripping it out, but this small amount is very, very insignificant, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I'm the light tonight, because I've made your money there.
Council Lehman?
While I may agree with building it, tearing it out and building it as a waste, I have to look at it from an operational user standpoint. So you build this trail that stops, and you have nowhere to connect, and you're walking across, whatever you're walking across for 30 feet to get there, and, you know, who's going to trip, who's going to fall down, who's going to scream? And I guess I don't want to see that happen either, so.
Wade through the mud.
Further comment?
No, I was just checking that we were being a little bit conservative, and it sounds like he's
Make a motion? Council Lehman?
Authorized grant request for 12th Avenue Trail Project, CIF 20-003, and Scott County 16 Trail Extension Project, CIF 19-005.
Second. I have a motion and a second, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Moving ahead, 8A, public hearing for the vacation of a public right-of-way in drainage and utility easement, Davy's second addition. Council Mokel?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Council Lewis. Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the public hearing is now open, and Michael will present, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is a vacation of public right-of-way in drainage and utility easements. This is the area we're talking about, this is Kennedy Street, which doesn't exist anymore, and Mountain Street, which is just a remnant. This is the original Davy's Edition, second, when it was platted. This is what's left today. So the city owns the parcel that's down here in the corner right now. This is platted for open space and park usage. When we went to record this with the county, they asked us to get this vacated before they would allow us to record it, because they were concerned somehow that we might use it. So that's why we're here tonight, to vacate this property.
Okay, questions on staff? Council Lehman?
Mr. Kersky, when I look at the black line on this map that you gave us, it goes out into the middle of 69. This one. Yep. The point there that goes out into the middle of County 69?
That is being, Mayor and council members, being fixed as part of this plot.
Okay, so, and then the second question, Mayor, was, when I go down toward that, between the black line on the south and the exit ramp from 169, is there any easements that Mendat is requiring along that exit ramp that we have to?
Mayor and council, if you look at the plot which is up on the screen, that's actually the property that Mendat sold to us.
Right.
All we're vacating is this right-of-way, which doesn't exist anymore, because it's in Mendat here, and this is an old city street here, and this tiny little piece up here is what's left.
Okay.
So we're having, the state, even though they're required, hasn't not been going through, they're supposed to be doing a lot of recombinations and getting rid of all this, they haven't done it. In fact, throughout the city, we run into this problem, so we're fixing it here on our property.
Okay, so it's the yellow portion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other questions? I have a question that is part of the trivia question from our last meeting, then, the answer, Kennedy?
Well, I thought it was Eisenhower.
Huh? Because I think someone has gone, the name of those streets?
Right.
Kennedy Eisenhower, yeah.
And then, here it is, Kennedy, so.
Monroe, Mound.
Mound?
Well, that's Mound.
I thought the real one that you were, the trivia question was, who knows the name of that street?
Mound and Kennedy?
Kennedy, so apparently I win, thank you all, accept the prize later.
Where was Eisenhower? He was in
You know what the prize is?
No, I don't.
The prize is you buy drinks after council meeting.
No, you brought that up, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we don't have a Washington street either, but I think that's because of the women's prison and Sweeney School in Lyons Park. That's probably where Washington would have been.
Close to Adams, right?
Where the prison is, is where.
That's where
Oh, we just vacated some
I think we need a Washington first.
So we still have Washington we can use, and now we have Kennedy that we can use.
So
We just used Lincoln.
We'll skip Nixon.
Was there more questions on staff? If not, Michael, thank you very much.
One quick
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is the current zoning on this piece of property there?
B1.
B1?
Thank you. This is a public hearing, if anybody would like to come forward and make comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome. This is a public hearing. Council Wyding?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Council Wyding?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-0
32.
32, yep. Resolution approving a vacation of public right-of-way in drainage and utility easements for property located north of US Highway 169, south of Veerling Drive, and west of Eisenhower Street.
Second.
Is there more call?
Second.
Second, I have a motion and a second, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Next up, 9A1, monthly financial review, Darren, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. One second here. Here we go. So before each night is the February monthly financial report. Obviously, two months into the year, it's hard to get a gauge for where we're sitting at. I put quite a few explanations in your report for tonight, but really looking at the arrows, we got a couple red arrows in the revenue side of things. First two of those are related to our taxes, we don't get those until June and December. Those will be red for a number of months to continue. The other red arrow is related to miscellaneous revenue, and that's really related to, we haven't necessarily closed the books yet for 2017. So we haven't allocated interest revenue for January and February to the general fund yet. It's sitting in the interest income account. And once we close that year, we then know exactly what our cash balances are within the general fund, and then we'll post those entries for January and February, and that'll reduce or eliminate that variance at that time, so. On that end of it, revenues all look good. Not really much to report on that end of it. Expenditure side, it's basically all the same as last month. The Mayor and City Council Division is a red arrow, and that's due to you guys pay for a lot of your expenditures at the front end of the budget cycle. So as the year progresses, that'll come back in line. The facilities division, we talked about that last month as well, too. We did some kind of reorganization a little bit of some of the maintenance and operational expenses of facilities. We brought in the Public Works Police Department and Fire Department under that facilities division to give them leeway and a little bit better ability to put their costs where they need to occur. So we will be bringing a budget amendment, I'll try to get that done for next council meeting just so we can kind of eliminate that variance and don't have to see that each time, so. Other than that, everything else is looking in, ready in with the variances for the month. We should be at about 16% of your budget expended through February. We're sitting right there at that amount for the total expenditures, so. All looking good so far at this point in time, so, any questions on that?
Questions on this page, Council Lehman?
I just have one question. Where do I go to look to track and see how we're doing on our energy tax revenue?
That goes into the capital improvement fund.
Yep.
And so that's, this is
That's where it goes, I'm looking to ask, I'm asking, where do I go to look at that quarterly or monthly?
I would have to get you that information, so. And we get those, we get those payments quarterly from the energy companies, so. I think we ended the year, we had projected, I think we budgeted right around $700,000, $750,000, something like that, and I think we came in at like $775,000. So it was, it was pretty close to projections, and that was with that circuit breaker in there as well, too. So Excel and CenterPoint did a good job of estimating those for us, so.
Right on budget, I believe.
Yep.
Right.
So we'll be able to do a quarterly comparative this year to last year?
Yep, it should be, you know, that first month last year, you'd have to go back and see if we actually captured the first, because it started January 1st, and some of them didn't get, I don't know if it started with the billing right-of-way in January, or if it wasn't the billing till
First quarter might not be accurate.
But it'll be pretty close as the year progresses.
Okay.
Council Lehman, or Council Lewis, excuse me?
Yeah, I would be interested in that, too, because I'd like to see how much the Met Council's sewage plant has gone down since they put in their solar panels.
So we don't get specific information, that's, actually, electrical usage is private
No, no, I don't mean electric use, but their payments would show up on
No, we just get one lump sum check.
Not individual users.
We don't get individual users' information, no.
Council Wyding?
I believe that was supposed to supply 10% of their electrical needs right there at the plant.
Yeah, I just was curious on what it's actually doing.
Other questions on this page particularly? If not, continue.
All right, so looking at Parks and Recreation, looking at, let me make this a little bigger here. Looking at the ICE Arena and Community Center. There again, we're two months into it, so it's tough to tell a lot of variances. Looking at the revenues for the ICE Arena, if you compare this year to last year, it looks like this year is down by about half almost. And that is actually due to the billing, we, last year we built the high school for the second half of their ICE, or their hockey seasons for their boys and girls. We built that right at the end of February, this year we built it the first part of March. So the timing of that, of that billing plays an effect into a monthly financial report like this, so. With that in there for March, that takes care of that variance, and it's right on where it was last year at this time, so. Expenditures are very similar to last year, and with the ICE Arena, that was full operational January 1st, so we're having a good comparison now this year from month to month on that end of it. Looking at the community center, that's going to be a little bit more difficult, as we know that didn't come online until about July sometime in that area. So that is why our expenditures at this point are higher than they were last year, is that we're in full operation at this point in time. If you look at the revenues here, you can see last year was $6,000, and actually it shows it kind of as a positive, but that's actually a negative number. And that's due to that accounting change that we talked about over the last couple of months, where we recognize the revenue for annual memberships over the life of the membership rather than at the beginning.
So that, it just appears skewed?
It appears skewed at the moment, because we went back and did a journal entry to that 2017 month in January. So that negative will disappear next month now, so. It's going to gradually grow back up as the year progresses, so. Other than that, it's, we're kind of early in the year at this point, so.
I'm still trying to, Darren, get a handle on the, I do understand accounting purposes of what you're trying to do with the deferred revenue.
Yes.
But if, so, February, year-to-date, year-to-date actual for that, 2018, that means you booked 250.
So that means we have on the books, at the end of February, we have $250,000 of revenue in our account of cash, but we're not going to recognize it as revenue. We'll recognize it incrementally over the next
Every month?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mayor, if I may? So, an example, and we'll try to do this January 1st. If I bought a year membership on January 1st, you're going to take, and I pay for it lump sum for the year, you're going to take that and you're going to break it down into 12 pieces, and each month, one 12th is going to
Yep, we do a year
be shown, and the remaining, so January, you take one 12th and you show it as revenue, you take the other 11 12ths and you show it as deferred.
Right.
Right? And so on and so forth, until it's either renewed or zero.
Right, at the end of the year, we'll recognize that full payment then. By December 31st, we would have recognized your full annual membership.
Right.
Further questions on this? Questions? If not, Darren, thank you again for your monthly update. We need to get some revenue on the tax line. All right, let's move ahead then to 9A2, Republic Services Annual Report. And welcome, everybody wants to talk about trash and recycling? Welcome.
I do. Thank you so much for inviting me this evening. I'm Bev Matisson with Republic Services. I'm your new municipal services manager. I'm here just to cover some highlights with you of 2017, and a look in the windshield for 2018. First of all, I want to talk about recycling in 2017. I get a little excited when I start talking about recycling. And with Shakopee, your volumes increased 5% year-over-year, which is an additional 134 tons that was captured. That's a big deal. Now, 5% may not sound a lot to you, but it is in my world. You know, we've got some challenges in recycling right now. And one of the challenges in terms of that volume is something we call lightweighting. Mayor Mars, I saw you lift up your bottle of water. Want to squeeze that a little bit? That's called lightweighting. We all have noticed that plastics have become lighter and lighter. Manufacturers are doing a very good job there. But what that means is to capture a ton of recycling with those bottles, we've got to capture twice the amount and process twice of the amount. So that 5% really is big. Shakopee's increased tonnage of recycled paper alone. Now, these are some fun facts here that I drew up for you. Help save another 1,300 trees, over 28,000 gallons of oil, 225 cubic yards of waste in the landfill, 300,000 kilowatts of energy, and over 525 gallons of water. Again, 5% is a lot. Current state of recycling, I think this is a piece that's very interested Current state of recycling, I think this is a piece that's very interested, interesting and worthwhile discussing. We have a lot of changes in recycling. You've probably seen on the news that were, that recycling commodities have decreased and largely due to exports. Last July, you see China changed its acceptance criteria with the World Trade Organization. China used to take just about any commodity in any condition. And now their acceptable contamination levels have come down to point five percent. That's extremely challenging for us. Now, at Republic Services, we do produce high-quality recycling, largely because our communities, they support recycling. Our cities are proactive in educating our residents, improving that quality. Our team, we've got established relationships here in the United States. We also have some very strong relationships, including China, Europe. So we're looking for lots of different avenues to continue to make recycling sustainable for all of us. The price, the, um, the, the price we think will normalize, but again, there is some uncertainty there. One of the things we're doing at Republic Service, myself, something that I'm driving is education. We know that, um, as, as residents, we are responsible in recycling. I recycle probably twice or thrice as much as, as I landfill in my home. And one of the things that we're doing is I put together an education piece very recently and I sent that to your city staff that can be used on the website, in a newsletter. And what this is about, everything used to always be about, you know, recycle and, and reuse. Now everything is, now the theme is clean, empty, dry. We can increase our recycling by making sure that we're reducing contamination. You see, the bottle of water that Mayor Mars just picked up had some water in it. There are times where our residents, they, they haven't finished the bottle, they'll throw it in the recycling. What happens to that? In the processing plant, we're not able to capture it. It's not the same weight. And with automation, it goes in, it literally, it goes into the trash side. It, the automation does not recognize that this is a bottle, an empty bottle of water. So the more education we get out to the public, the more that we can capture, the higher quality it is. And that's a win for you, a win for us, and a win for our residents. A little bit about two thousand seventeen for Republic Services, it was an exciting year for us. What we did here in May twenty-seventh is we unveiled our new compressed natural gas fueling station. Over half of our fleet now is all compressed natural gas. What that means to you is there's less noise pollution, less air pollution. They're just far more environmentally responsible vehicles on the road. According to U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, each CNG collection truck deployed is equivalent to planting over six hundred mature trees a year. For us, with our fleet, that's equivalent to planting thirty-three, six hundred mature trees annually. So together, the city of Shakopee and us, we've got a forest going. Twenty-seven oppor- twenty seventeen opportunities. Prior to my arrival, actually upon my arrival, I was made very aware of some opportunities we had in two thousand seventeen, so I'd like to address those with each of you this evening. Three priorities here are opportunities. Were billing, customer service, and recycling calendars. So I'll briefly retouch on each one of those, because I'm sure you have some questions. So I'd like to just address those now. Billing, disposal increase. You approved a disposal increase for January of two thousand eighteen. And that was realized on your residents' bills November and December of two thousand seventeen. We sincerely apologize for that error. We did not take it lightly. And it was corrected. The action that we took on that, one of my first days of, of employment in this job was to send out a letter to each of the residents explaining what had happened, what the charges of their bills involved, and taking full responsibility. In addition to crediting each and every, every resident for that error. In addition to that, Nate had given me an invoice of one of your residents. And there was a fuel and environmental fee on that resident's bill. So I took a, a look at that and saw that, yeah, that's not part of our contract. That's not what we said we would do. So, that resident was credited. And what I did is ran a query to also see what was the scope of this? Was it one resident? Was it five? What did that look like? The credits for two thousand seventeen involving fuel and environmental fee, fees totaled six thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars. And those were credited back to each resident. I decided that if it could happen in two thousand seventeen, let's take a look at the timeframe from the beginning of our contract together. And so, that query produced six thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. All credited back to your residents. Customer Service Center. In one of my first meetings with your city, I was informed of the concerns over hold times, customer hold times, and also one-call resolution. I've worked in a call center before. I know what this means. Our hold times have now reduced. You, your concerns have not fallen on deaf ears. We hear you and we're doing something about it. As of April second, our customer resource group is changing its model. I believe it's going to provide a far better customer experience. What this model looks like is currently the calls flow in to Indianapolis, our call center. We have three national call centers. Now, that call center takes calls for many different states across the nation, as do our other remaining two call centers. What is going to change is, is there is a need, there are so many different, so many different elements of billing, of, of state laws, of taxes, that it's very difficult for those agents to be able to speak to a number of people from a number of different states with great accuracy. So what they've done is they're, they've taken each, they've taken this center and they've divided it up into pods. We will have a pod that will serve Minnesota and the surrounding area. That way, that group of eighty agents will be able to answer questions, resolve issues. Their skill level will be higher, as will their knowledge. So I'm very excited about that piece. Also, our, our customer call center has been able to identify peak times of business. When are these calls coming in? What days, what times? And they've added additional staff. They've hired a number of part-time individuals to come in and help take those calls during peak times. So, better times ahead. Recycling calendars. Due to an upload system error, dual calendars went out to some of your residents. That was confusing for them. Created a lot of calls. So what we did is we sent out a letter to each affected resident explaining what happened along with a snapshot of their actual recycling calendar. And now, what I put in place is a quality process so that before those calendars go out, we're able to take a look at those to ensure that they are accurate again. We don't want to cause any confusion, not again. So those were our two thousand seventeen opportunities. Two thousand eighteen, I'm very excited about. Yard waste season is approaching. And, um, we know that in two thousand seventeen, we had some hardships. So yard waste, we held our rate for the city of Shakopee, same rate as last year. It is sixty-four, sixty-four for the season. We've got our spring cleanup scheduled for April twenty-eighth. And we're working very hard to, to really sync up our plans and we're very excited. City of Shakopee continues to grow and grow in the numbers of participants in that event. So congratulations to all of you and we're excited to be part of it. Recycling, I mentioned continuing, continuing education. I will continue to provide education pieces to your staff that can be used on the website or in mailings, you know, in terms of your newsletter. My resource, my resource is an app, is a communication tool. You can download it on your smartphone or your, your computer, your desktop. Enhancements are coming in two thousand eighteen. That will be very, very nice for our municipal residents. What that means is they'll be able to go on their app. They'll be able to see their calendar. They'll be able to schedule alerts on what day is recycling day. Just a number of different functions, making it easier for the residents. And in terms of communication, we have a number of, a growing population who would prefer not to call us by phone, but to reach out to us electronically. Through that app, they'll be able to take care of business on the app or again, on the website. Last but not least, our contract term is coming up May of twenty nineteen. And I invite conversations in regards to that and look forward to those discussions.
Very good. Do we have a question? Of Bev? Councilor Lehman?
The, uh, feedback that you received from your billing letters and stuff that you sent out. What feedback did you get back from that?
From your residents?
My residents.
Mm-hmm. The residents that I spoke to, some of them were very, they were confused. And so even though we tried to make the language in the letter as clear as possible, it just was a matter of walking them through it one, one at a time.
Can I-
Yeah, more question, yeah. Colin?
The, the size of the recycled containers, and this may be a city problem, I'm not sure. For elderly or singles, do, do we have a one-size-only recycle bin in Shakopee?
No, we don't, uh, Councilor. We have several options that are available.
I know we do for the garbage-
Although I'm not sure what our smallest size is. Nate, do you know?
For recycling, they're all the ninety-five, I believe.
Yeah, the recycle bins are all those one-size-
Unless you're in a town-
Waste you can do, I believe, as small as a thirty gallon, isn't it?
That's, that's the trash, though.
Yeah.
For trash?
For trash, you can do, I think, forty-five, sixty-five, or ninety.
Right.
But my, I believe a townhouse has a different size recycling than a home. I think there is two sizes.
We can, we can, we can get that clarified.
I know there's some, some, uh-
Those are big carts?
Desire to have smaller recycle bins for the, the single elderly or the, the single person, studio type, whatever. Because they have this big recycle thing and they're putting, you know, very little into it in comparison for one person. Um, and it's just, it's something that has been brought to me by my, my residents, so. And I, I'll have staff look at that. The, uh, contact information for yourself, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Beverly Matisson. And I do have a business card that I will leave you, Matt.
Okay. Matisa.
Matisson. It looks like Mathiason.
The, did I catch the date right on the customer service center rollout of April second?
Monday, April second, is what I've been informed.
Okay. And the twentieth is cleanup day? Uh, and just in a little bit of humor, but the contamination in the Chinese metal, steel and aluminum is much higher than the contamination in our garbage, in our recycle.
Well, mixed papers up there a bit, but yes, you are correct.
Cleanup day?
Twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth.
April twenty-
April twenty-eighth.
April twenty-eighth for cleanup day, that is a great event here in town. Uh, Councilor Lewis?
Uh, one of the big questions that I get is, they're trying to figure, or the citizens are trying to figure out, and it may be on the bill, I am not that familiar with the bill, about what the recycling pays back and, and what way does that lower their bill?
On the billing, what we do is, yeah, we, we don't provide any information on rebates to the residents.
That they, that you could get it out to the citizens, that way, I think they would entice them to recycle more. You know, they, they see a cost benefit to it, it, it-
Okay, so when we send that information to the city on a quarterly basis? Are you saying to include, that that would be beneficial to include maybe?
No.
No?
No, that, that information, the individual residents do not get a decrease in their bill based upon how much they recycle. There's, there's no correlation between those two.
It's a citywide reduction?
In the contract. The contract, the city gets a portion of the recycling-
Correct.
-back and we use it for cleanup day, I think.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That, that may need to be stated a little better, so.
It is.
You know, if it's offsetting the cleanup day, it would be great to be able to tell residents that. So that, that way they know what it's going for.
And I have information on the recycle bins. You can have a sixty-five gallon, which is a standard recycling cart for townhomes, and then the ninety-five is currently the standard recycling for single family. But we should be able to, since we've already got the sixty-five in stock, we could probably take a look at that.
Councilor Whiting?
Yeah, uh, just a, a couple points, but on that point, uh, I was surprised that, how I filled up that ninety-five gallon recycling bin when we first started this combined, so. I do recycle more than I throw away in trash now, and that, that just, I didn't think that was possible. I do have, uh, some thoughts. You know, last time, it wasn't you, it was your predecessor that was here. And we talked about, you know, the tipping fee increase and how we were going to roll it out. And it was explained that, you know, that the residents were going to get a letter before that happened and it was, we thought it was all dialed in and that didn't happen. And that was a concern, because there was a lot of pushback from the city. Uh, there was concerns there. They didn't know why the, the price went up. And we thought we had a plan here, and I think it was Matt that brought it up.
Specifically made that point.
We wanted a letter to go out and, and, um, first of all, let me say, I hear no complaints about the drivers. They do great work. The trash can, you know, every now and then someone's going to miss their trash pickup or something like that might happen, that might come up, but overall, they do great work. The issues come back to the customer service end and, and this issue with the billing. And, um, that's a concern of mine, you know. Every year, we've, you know, and it's probably the tipping fees or whatever, but the cost has gone up. And, uh, we talked about that renegotiating the, the contract in, as twenty eighteen, I believe, this, this in-
It's up in twenty nineteen.
So it's up at the end of this year. So, uh, that's, to me, that's going to say, you know, I know the drivers do great work, but this may be a time where we send it out to, to bid, and that's a concern. And it comes back to those customer service issues. It comes back to, you know, hey, we, we had a plan here and we're all working together and then it just disappeared. It went by the wayside on your end. And, um, that's a problem.
I understand.
So.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, just to make a point on Councilor Lewis's comments about how do we encourage recycling. In my mind, the way the system is set up and designed is the more that you recycle, the smaller of a trash can. The trash can, not the recycle can. You get the bigger recycle, you recycle ninety percent of your stuff and the money that you're saving on getting this smaller-sized trash can is where your savings is.
Saving some money, right.
Right? That's, that's, that's how I see it.
That's one way to look at it.
Okay.
Look at it as a broader earth thing.
Because that's really, that's really where your, your individual billing savings is.
Yeah.
Because you can reduce your individual bill by having a smaller garbage can.
Right.
Absolutely true. Absolutely true.
Okay? So, and the only way to do that is to have most of your stuff going into the recycle. Although, a preface by saying it has to qualify as recyclable material.
Good quality recyclables.
Yes, not, not wishful recycling.
The, the last point I would make is, is I'm going to probably be just a little bit more blunt than Mr. Whiting was on the customer service aspect of that last increase that was discussed with your predecessor, so I, don't take this personally to you. We made it perfectly clear, this body did, in a public setting, on camera, to your predecessor, and I specifically made that part of the motion, that your company would notify our residents by letter in their billing, why this increase is happening. And it was the tipping fee increase and the moving to a different location and so on and so forth, legitimate reason. It wasn't followed through, period. And that's unacceptable. And the outcry that we received from our constituents when we did everything one hundred percent that we should have. I mean, we did it in a public setting, we were crystal clear, if you want to watch the tape. And your predecessor dropped the ball and it fell on us. Great to hear that you're looking at these items in your priorities. I think you're spot on with them priorities. And I realize, you know, accidents do happen. That's one that shouldn't have happened, to be honest with you.
Well, I think these are all good comments and that billing thing certainly caused
It wasn't your fault.
Some issues here for, for us and, but it did get obviously resolved and I know that staff worked very hard at it. And we have a new rep.
You have a new rep.
And that is great. Counselor Lewis?
To Counselor Lehman's comment about the more recycling you do, the smaller can you need. Not with your company, but the previous company that we had, I went to the smaller can. There was a couple of times where, you know, it was maybe a little too small, so the cover would be partway up and that. They had a penalty fee if that was the case to basically push you into the larger can. Does your company do that or, you know, do, you know, it, it happens where a person, you know, that's single has a little extra garbage. They had a party or something and, you know, hate to see them be dinged for something that, you know, happens very rarely.
Right. I will tell you that I am also a municipal customer in the city of Champlin. And during holiday times, my lid is cracked open as well. And I am not charged for that, for that overage. If, as, as long as the driver is able to pick that cart up and tip it without spillage, that's not, that's, that's not an issue for us. We know that that occasional time, you're going to have a little bit more trash in your bin. Generally, we see more of that during the holiday time.
Right, right.
And that's just part of doing business. I've, in my audits of bills, I have not seen, because I have looked at a lot of your bills in the last sixty days. And I have not seen any overages, any, any overage charges for those carts that might be cracked open a bit.
Okay, and I know you're going to get the abuser of that, that they're going to stuff as much in the small can as they could get in a big one, but, you know, I just, just wanted to make sure that, you know, we have some balance.
Yes, and on occasion, to that point, on occasion, we have some folks that stuffed so much in so tightly that when you go to tip it.
Something come off?
Yeah, the tipping bar, it, it won't come up over that tipping bar, so only half of the trash then is released. So occasionally, we will get a call about that and we just ask them to loosen that up, we send a truck out and we capture it.
Now, you're saying that the, the truck will not raise the can to a point where it will dump, or when they dump, the stuff stays stuck in?
It, it's stuck because it's so jammed.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've seen people.
No matter if you tip it complete, when you're tipping it completely upside down, it's not going to release from that bottom space. Occasionally, that can happen.
Yeah, one, one follow-up question. The main complaint I've gotten from day one is wheels that are being damaged. And I'm not saying it's because of your company, I'm just wondering if our, the product we purchased was maybe a little lightweight for the job. Do you have a number on how many wheels are being replaced?
That's a city.
We, we don't, Counselor Lewis, but I can tell you that the wheels of these carts have been an issue. But alls we need is somebody to let us know and we'll get them replaced. But the carts clearly have a wheel issue.
Yeah, and is this something we should look into? I mean, what is our surplus of wheels at this point? Do we need to look at a better set of wheels so that when we run out of these?
I, I think we're okay. We, we still have quite a, a, a supply of the carts themselves and storage with Republic. And, you know, but I think that our next look at carts, we might look at a, a sturdier wheeled cart than what we currently have. Because the wheels are clearly an issue and they have been.
They've been from day one and, you know, hopefully, if, if we need to, if we run out of wheels, we can find a better quality wheel that will take a little more abuse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there, if I remember the contract correctly, if there's bags set aside on the side of the, outside of the, the cart, there is a fee charged for that. And if any residents are watching, what we've done in my neighborhood is we've worked it out with my neighbors and saying, hey, if, if you need to use my trash can on a, on a Sunday night, because I get picked up on Monday, go ahead, because I might use yours the next time. So I think it can be worked out in neighborhoods, but I, I do believe there is an extra charge if the bags are set aside.
If they're set alongside the cart.
And I think there, there's also opportunities for people to get rid of furniture and things and just call and you got to pay a little extra, but they'll come pick up that too. Cleanup day is an option, but call ahead.
I think you have to call ahead for them actually.
Yep, you call ahead and I think you put it on the, in, in my case, I have an alley, so you put it on the front of the house, but there are opportunities at least to get rid of some, those larger items for an extra fee, but it's better than floating with them, so.
And I like your suggestion. I'm glad that too, you mentioned that in terms of neighbors helping each other out. There are times where my recycle bin is just overflowing and I'm going, I know I'm going to have something along the side. But I've got, you know, some empty nesters next door that seem to have a little extra space and they'll let me use it, so. It's, it's good to be, it's good to be a good neighbor.
Counselor Lewis, did you have more?
Totally agree with you. I mean, that's what I was just going to say is, we, we need to promote a little more neighborhood, working together.
Counselor Lehman?
I'm going to be the ad guy out here. Careful. The reason we started a closed system was because people that didn't have the service were using other people's service without asking for permission.
Without, yeah, there's that permission.
So the key here is that you're asking your neighbor for permission.
Yes.
Critical key.
Well, one more thing to add. I think in the past, we have talked about some of the recycling, how much, you know, we recycled and some of the, the, the value we've got back from the city, so. I, I think it is a value for our, our constituents to know, you know, what we're getting back, what we're paying for it. And if we can maybe get that on some more information there out on the website, I think it's important, so. Yep, exactly.
Deb, thank you. I want to comment that I was very interested in the five percent increase in recycling. Our community typically is a high recycler. And we do talk about the size of the bin of the recycling, because years ago, right? Over twenty years, and in my family, my, my wife is in this industry and, you know, used to have the little brown paper bags of recycling next to your big garbage thing, and then you had little blue Shakopee tubs that you could maybe get two bags in or three, right? And then your big garbage thing, but now, one sort. Big, huge thing, put, put it all in there that's recyclable. And yes, the, the trade-off is less garbage, less going to the landfill, maybe a smaller cart. It's amazing how the engagement of citizens that wants to recycle and we've seen that equation change in the last twenty years. And there were some times that people in the recycling industry or the garbage industry never thought that would happen. So kudos to the industry and actually the people for caring and understanding and learning what's recycling, because certainly, I'm putting more in it. It has to go by my wife that gets, she looks at it all, that can be recycled, no, yes, yes, you know, but we appreciate that. Counselor Lewis?
I just want to thank you for a quality presentation and very informational. Thank you.
It is my pleasure to serve all of you and the residents of Shakopee.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Great, moving forward, ten A, the city bill list for our review. And next up would be ten B liaison reports. Counselor Lehman?
Are you going to give her a chance to give us her contact information? All right, the liaison.
Oh, she has cards.
Thursday, what day was that? March eighth, one sixty-nine Quarter Coalition meeting. Very, very good meeting. We had presentations, multiple presentations. Thirty-five W, bridge reconstruction. Mind that was there explaining that whole project. Five lanes will, will remain open at all times. The capacity improvement northbound is going to be from Cliff and, and Black Dog up to one hundred and eighth, is it?
To the next piece where it expands.
Yeah, I think it's a hundred and sixth or a hundred and eighth or something like that on the northbound side. And then they're going to raise the, raise it up where the high water would come up, where the old Volkswagen kind of by Burnsville Dodge and, what's the other, Northern Edge Tool. They're going to raise that low section up and the shoulder widened. Will increase southbound capacity when needed as an additional lane. Expensive project, it is moving forward. It's going to be a multiple year project. And they didn't want to look at one sixty-nine restriping as an alternative route for excess traffic during the construction, because since it's a multiple year project, in the wintertime, they have to stripe one sixty-nine back, so they have snow storage capabilities. And they don't want to confuse the motorist public of it's restriped, you can use it this way, now you can't, now you can, now you can't. So, but there was talk about that and they don't know exactly what the, they know how they're going to lay out the alternatives and where the traffic's going to go, but they, they can't dictate it, so they want to wait and see how the traffic actually does it by itself. And if they do have to restripe one sixty-nine, they said they will and they would do that internally.
Are they talking, talking about impacts on seventy-seven to the east as well?
All the impacts.
Right, okay.
All the impacts. There, there's multiple scenarios and they, you know, they can guesstimate what people are going to do. But until the driving public actually decides what they're going to do, they, they, they don't know. You know, they know that there's going to be roughly this many, this percentage that's going to find alternatives, but what is that alternative? They can guess, you know, twenty-five percent might use Cedar, twenty-five percent might use one sixty-nine. These are all guesses until you really see where them patterns are going. The other presentation that they had was improvements on, well, that this, this council approved, supporting the port area in Savage and the one sixty-nine improvements. The port improvements had four different designs. And really what it boils down to was trying to get the truck traffic that is making, at times, they had a video of trucks making a two and three wide left of thirteen into the ports. Or coming out and ramping up the speed in twos or threes and really kind of blocking up the whole area going through there, so. Really what they're trying to do is they're trying to make it so that the stacking is off of the highway with the, with a ramp, kind of a frontage ramp on the side, on the north side between the rail and the existing thirteen, to where they can get up to speed. And then coming in, if they're coming from the south, it would actually go off and across and give them some stacking on the others, other side to where they can wait until they can turn into, get into the grain, so they're not stacking up on the road. So, so really, it's, it's visibility and stacking are their main issues on that project. On the one sixty-nine project, it's the men pass lane from the station on seventeen, Marshall Road Station, up to well, the first one leg is from Marshall Road to, to the bridge. The full, long-term plan is to go, it goes all the way up to fifty-five. One option is fifty-five, the other one's three ninety-four, one benefits businesses and one more is drop off, taking people to work, and the other one benefits citizens more. That's long-term, but that would add an additional lane on the inside north and south. The southbound lane, actually, they want to put a longer ramp on the southbound side. Couple of changes on the, the flyover, kind of mini-flyover that you can take either going into Shakopee on one oh one, coming south on one sixty-nine, or you take the mini-flyover and, and do the thirteen east, savage. So, great presentations. I asked that they be put online. I noticed they were, they are online now at the one sixty-nine Quarter Coalition website. So if you want to watch them presentations, they were pretty extensive. Hopefully, we'll get some dollars allocated for the one sixty-nine portion. Transportation's pretty important to me. Well, and I know it is to everybody. I believe it passed five oh. April fourteenth, I'm going to be going to the Capitol with the one sixty-nine Quarter Coalition to talk to our House and Senate members up there and see if we can't let them understand the importance of improvements to the southwest quadrant to move not only people, but products and services. Last night was a school board meeting. What were the highlights of the school board meeting? They put together a I shouldn't say long-term, but a nineteen, eighteen, nineteen budget work document with a timeline. And I actually have a copy of that. I'm going to give that to Mr. Reynolds to share with the rest of the council. It's looking at everything from employee, employees and expenses and revenues and the whole nine yards. They hired a new finance director at last night's meeting. Forgot his name, don't have my notes with me. And it sounds like, when I read this document that I'm going to give to Mr. Reynolds, it goes out until May of this year for eighteen nineteen, May, June. So it sounds to me like they're really going to put an effort into trying to right the ship, if you will, which is good. And it seems like they're really looking at it from a lot of different angles. All, I should say all angles. And, 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 you know, we, we saw that in, in, in the public with the negotiations between the district and their employees and stuff and their, their labor negotiations, which you know, had a, a pretty small increase with some concessions for the employees. And that shows that all sides are at the table trying to fix the situation, which is somewhat reassuring as a member of the district, so. That is my report for this evening, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. Great info. On March ninth, attended scale. We heard from Dave Bauer from the Urban Land Institute about demographics and demographics in Shakopee. Not a lot of surprises. We, we are becoming older, we are becoming more diverse. But we are, and we are still, still continuing to grow. Also after that, I attended a RTF Regional Training Facility meeting, which they started a discussion on annual costs. Bill Reynolds went to an additional meeting and put out some information the other day, so more information will be coming on the annual cost for that. Over the weekend, went to a Great Chamber event and a Rotary event. One thing I'll say about our community is they're really, it's a community of givers for those charity events. I think that's great. Last night, I attended Barry Stock's last city council meeting in the city of Savage. He's the longtime fifteen-plus-year city administrator over there. Also, as well as, he was this assistant city administrator in Shakopee here for many years. Thirty-five years of civic governmental involvement. Tip my hat to him. He actually, we, we talk about our, our festival days, the derby days, he was actually on the Um, he actually, we, we talk about our, our festival days, the Derby Days, he was actually on the, on the ground floor of Derby Days when it first started, and helped get that off the ground. Um, but I've known Barry, and he's a true community servant and, uh, and served well, uh, both Shakopee and Savage. So that was great to, to see him off on that. That's my report, Counselor Whiting?
Oh, thank you, and I, I believe Mr. Stock was also Key in Dan Patch Days too. I think he, uh, ran that festival too, so here's some hint, nudge, nudge, no. For city staff here, no, we won't do that to him, I know we, we'd like to. Uh, on the third, on the fourteenth, uh, Main Street, uh, downtown group met. Um, Elliot at the Main Street is going through his process of, uh, uh, his business of the year, and I think there's three categories. Uh, business of the year, uh, new business, and I think it's remodel of the year.
So, yeah.
Um, so that's some, uh, nominations are now being accepted, if you want to email him with some suggestions. Uh, also put down on your calendars, uh, Thursday, May third, is the, the Main Street Flower Basket fundraiser at Turtles. That's, uh, probably starts around six, six-thirty, uh, for social hour. Um, also, I picked up this, uh, I believe it was through scale, but Scott County is, uh, and that's, was, was tonight, uh, in Shakopee anyway, but it's their live, learn, and earn initiative. And there's also another opportunity on April tenth, from six to nine P M. at the Aspen Academy in Savage, uh, talking about, um, conversations about housing and, and, uh, some social interactions involved with that, and I believe they even serve dinner, so. Um, some opportunities to get your voice heard, um, out there, and, uh, that's about all I have.
Excellent, uh, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Mokel?
Um, on March fifteenth, I had my land use advisory committee, and of course, it's gonna be a busy year as we get ready for, um, the comprehensive plans. But, um, one article I wanted to have Mr. Reynolds give to you is, it's called "You Don't Have to Live Here", and it was a, um, article about messaging as, in regards to housing and, um, how we can better communicate with our citizenry. Um, the other one is a study that, um, was done on the typology of the change in the neighborhoods, and it, um, took census data in ten different tracts and started to try to understand the community transitions and, um, give us more localized information about how our cities are growing and changing. Um, so there was, um, and if you don't know anything about the, um, census tracts, uh, e- excuse me, there was four hundred and seventy-two out of seven hundred and twenty that they used for this study. Um, so that's an idea of how many census tracts there are. Um, and they are getting us an updated map, because the map on the, was really small. So as soon as I get that, I will get it sent to everybody, and it also, um, has them grouped from A to G. And, um, I'll get you what those descriptions are, because they didn't supply us with those. Um, one that they gave us was based on, um, the type B was based on the demographic, the housing ma- uh, market and the built environment. And so all of those will change depending on what area geographically you are looking at. So as soon as I get that, I will get that sent to you. Um, and then Spock, last night, um, it was actually a two, two meetings, because we, they called the meeting because of the weather the last, um, time. So, um, on the water side, um, the senior manager, um, attended the Hamlin Course for ten weeks on water management. And then, um, they are currently exercising the gate valves for, to prepare for the flushing that will be going on here shortly for the spring. And, um, then the last thing on the water side was they did go through a purchase agreement for a booster station in Wind, in Windermere Way. Um, so they're getting ready for that transition as they start moving into their phases, um, and then-
Is it, Windermere Way, is that the second high elevation?
It's not quite the highest, but yeah, it's the next one. So, and, um, the piece that they're buying is right where those houses are already developed. Um, apparently, one of them has sold, um, to the developer, and so now the developer is now selling it back to, um, Spock. And so it'll be right in that area there. Um, and they're hoping that it'll fit the tanks, otherwise they might have to move the tanks, um, further down. So, um, and there's a little logistics there, but that's, this is the first phase of that. Um, so they're hoping it'll solve that, because there is a retention pond close by, and that was the fear that that maybe won't pass, so, inspection. Um, and then on March second, um, they had, on the electric side, two outages, March second, top of the pole had rotted, so it only affected one customer. Um, they did not say where that one was at. And then on three fourteen, on the seven eight hundred block of Sarazin, they had a bad transformer, which left forty customers without power for two hours and another forty without power for four hours. So, and they had to work through a lot of issues to find which transformer that was. Um, and then they're also just working through checking circuits, um, tree trimming. Um, they took the wire down that was left in Windermere, 'cause it's now underground, um, so they were collecting that. Um, and they are also going through and training staff on how to find, um, bad connections without having to go to the outage, and they actually found one this last time, and so, um, they caught it while it was running hot, and they caught it at that time of day where it was kinda glowing, so they could see that, so that was very close to. Um, and then they're also practicing for the rodeo, and they're doing some infrared camera training and underground training, so, that's what they are working on.
Lot, lot going on, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, administration report.
Uh, just one thing to, to, uh, piggyback on your, uh, recognition of Mr. Stock. Uh, Mr. Stock, for those, uh, of, uh, the citizens and individuals, uh, who have had the opportunity to work with him, uh, just a fabulous representative of my profession, our profession, and, uh, we're gonna celebrate that, uh, on Thursday, March twenty-second at six P M. uh, at the Environmental Learning Center in Savage. So, uh, I'm sure he would appreciate you coming over and saying hi. Uh, he's worked here many, many years, uh, was very instrumental in a lot of the things that, uh, that we work with on a daily basis. And again, uh, hats off to, uh, Barry, he certainly deserves it, and, uh, you can just see the weight of the world off his shoulders. He's a very happy man right now.
All right, thank you, Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Reynolds, can you put that out in an email? It's much easier for me to remember.
Yes, sir, yeah, we'll do.
And if you guys show up, tease him, call him Very Barry Stock.
Well, apparently, there's some great photos of his life that are gonna be shown, and I don't know if you know, but apparently he had an Afro at one point.
I used to call him Very Barry.
Oh, wow.
It'll, it'll be fun.
All right. Anything else you can adjourn? Uh, Counselor Lewis?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to April third, twenty eighteen, at seven P M.
I have a motion, and Counselor Whiting will second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, we are adjourned at nine sixteen.